Dana? Dana Smith, maintenance facilities update at that time of the month.
I hope Huggins can get her done without me. With regard to a couple of things that was out there, I know that Mr. Christian has signed an invoice just recently that for the schematic for the fields, I haven't seen it, but he did sign it. This is done.
Is this the curb from South Charleston or somewhere like that?
Somewhere like that, that he had to do a schematic, and he has approved payment for that. It is done, I just haven't seen it. And there's plenty of dirt up there for soccer and tennis.
What's your plans on tennis now since you mentioned it?
Well, the water line's in good shape. We can miss it, the problem is they run the fiber optic line right through it. We're gonna have to, there're not gonna be as much dirt as I'd hoped. I'm gonna need a little bit of that dirt up there for football.
I mean, do you still see the tennis court there?
Oh, yes. It's still gonna be at the same place. The fiber optic line, I went over and dug it up right before winter time, and it's about two foot under the dirt line up there where it's at its highest level. And they slope approximately a foot, four courts are gonna slope approximately a foot anyway, so... But I will need some of that dirt, not mine lot, because I can still go down another foot without having to...
I hope you're right.
I hope you're right, too. We'll get something smaller than a bit of dirt on that, so... And some of the general maintenance issues that we mentioned, we've been focusing on the SBA schools. We've got inspection coming up next week, so we have been focusing on Hamlin Middle School, Lincoln County High School, West Hamlin, and Harz, trying to get those little things done. They need to be done before that happens.
So, you said an SBA inspection?
Yeah, the State Department of Education does the inspection, and they come annually to look at...
Every school?
No, just needs projects that they funded in the past. And those are the four locations they'll go. Reason being, Hamlin Middle School, is because that was a needs project that funded the HVAC, the windows, the roof, and all those $2.1 million projects that we did here. That's the reason they look at that. The other three, of course, they funded the schools. So, they'll be here, and there was something else he mentioned. Let's see, the schematic, general maintenance. Something else he talked about, too, I was gonna...
Speaker, too.
I don't know anything like that, as far as I've heard.
Speaker's assistant.
Yeah, it's in the commerce area.
I thought there was a third thing.
General maintenance, that's what he said. He said light bulb.
Yeah, there's something else he mentioned. Something else I knew something about was from him. I can't remember what was. Well, give you some information on what's going on. We had our auction today, we got $693. We got rid of a lot of junk, which will help us allow, that's the other thing I was gonna talk about, allow Lincoln County High School's chair storage, that they're now storing that in mechanical rooms and stuff like that. We're gonna store those in that brown building up here. The fire marshal's just absolutely wanting them out of those mechanical rooms. And we've got a lot of maintenance items like carpet pieces, we've got floor tiles, or not floor tiles, we've got floor boofing, things like that that we store over there that we've got to put in that brown building up here. We got a lot of it cleaned out today, and we'll move the chairs when we have graduation day.
Are these the good chairs, or...?
Yes, well, there's two sets of chairs, and we'll put them both in there. They've all gotta get out of these mechanical rooms. They've put their foot down on them, it's gotta get, so that's where we'll put them. Of course, the water, we're back to normal on the water, and we've had to do a lot of extra work on hauling water, and we've been bombarded with food service commodities, so we've done very little with school duty. We've been dealing with those two items quite a bit over the last month, so we've not done other than getting rid of the junk and moving some things around, storing them in different locations. We haven't really done a lot of that at any school duty. But we're hopefully gonna get back on that, of course. With regard to the Hamlin LSIC, they mentioned a restroom that needed repair for the kindergarten room. That was done in February the 20th. I went out there yesterday and talked to the teacher, she's been using it since then, and it's worked fine, so... Everything's fixed on that. And we're in the actual sewer line, not the storm drain, so everything's good on that.
Now, that was taken care of at that time, but they did not understand, they did not realize, I guess, when they made their list, that that was...
Somebody didn't communicate. And I don't know where that came from, or who thought we hadn't had it done, but there was a couple of weeks there, almost two weeks, that they had to not use it, but that's what's... Roof, they mentioned the roof. I still have that plan to bid it in June, unless something would happen with the sewer plant at Midway or sewer plant at Duvall that would cause me and Hampshire to prolong that, that will be taken care of. That's a project I'm willing to do if we don't have an emergency that just takes away my capital improvement. The windows, if the CEFP don't change, if the new committee doesn't recommend something else, or if we don't have an emergency, then I still plan on submitting the window project again in the fall.
For Hamlin?
Yeah, but something else they had on their LSIC, Hamlin Ranger.
Yes, before.
The apartment, the carpet, I talked to the secretary yesterday, and she thought the carpet was gonna be delivered two loads to that. So, as soon as that happens, they can actually move in, so the line's been put, but... There's a little bit of electric. Well, last time I was there, it was a little bit electric to be done, but not a whole lot interfered with. Trim, of course, all that's gotta be done. They're gonna change out some lighting, for the most part, as soon as the carpets are started. The Lincoln County walkway, they've done the survey. If you look over there, there's little flags everywhere where the ramp is and where the walks, the steps are gonna go. They're coming tomorrow to put the sign that the state requires, the funding efforts, and tells about the project a little bit, so they're gonna mark it to sign up. And there were some questions about the Duvall property. At one time, the Lions Club owned a portion of the concession stand and the softball field and part of that hillside. Because at one time, I think David Bell was principal there, they'd gotten a squabble, and Lions Club wanted them to practice football, they was into it, so I had a survey. And so, they didn't own as much of the football field as they had thought, they didn't own any of it, but they did a softball field and just a little piece of concession stand about where the line was. So, after that squabble, they ended up giving that property to Parks and Recreation. And they had it for a couple of years. Parks and Recreation got tired paying the board of risk insurance on that property, so they, it came back to us. So, we own that property. We had winterized the concession stand and the restrooms, of course, baseball started up. And somebody got in there and turned the water back on, and our water lines froze up. And so, we've spent quite a bit of time replacing and fixing water leaks. I think that's completed, at least on that facility. I think they might still have an issue with the other building, I'm not sure. We haven't really checked it out, because that's the restroom they wanna use for baseball. We're trying to get that done, but that's really, it's a long time up there. That's about all I have to inform you on, unless you have questions.
Up at Harz, I noticed up there, Dana, back there, away from the building, there's brick and block, I guess, from the construction of the building.
Yes, that's extra. I thought they might use that for a sign. They sent, bought a sign, so I don't know if they have any planned projects for that block and brick. It belongs to us, if we want to, wanted to sell it, I guess, we could have it put it in auction and sell it.
Just have those, or if it was something we wanted to use, or...
I would think if they wanted, ever got some volunteers to build a storage building or something, it would match the school, so I would think they'd want to keep that.
If there's not really any plans for it?
There's not any plans for it that I'm aware of, because I got a call, actually, from somebody in Harz that was interested in it, wanting to know what we was gonna do with it. I don't know of any planned projects for that.
I just noted, you just moved there and saw it, I wondered...
Selling it is an option, if they don't have any plans, we could...
I don't have any preference, I just wondered if there was any plan.
Dana? The property that joins me up there, the softball, baseball field, does the board own that now?
I don't look at that portion of the property that closely. I've got the survey over there that...
Yeah, I have it, also.
Oh, you've got it?
I'm not sure who owns it.
Well, we own all the property that, if you've got the same survey that lists our property and the Lions Club property, we own all that.
So, the board owns everything up there?
Everything, everything up there belongs to the Board of Education. Parks and Recreation is gone, and so...
All the way up there on Mike Mills property.
It goes way up that hillside, and yeah, I don't, yes, oh, Mike Mills property, yes.
I think the board owns part of your property, too.
Yeah, I think we own some of your Christmas trees. I might not buy one next year, I might just go up there and cut one down.
I'm well aware of the survey, but I keep abreast of it.
Well, it was worth a try.
Probably has electronic fans or something.
Dana, someone brought my attention up to Harz, that at the evening when they're picking up their children, parents are picking up their children, they have, they're lined up all the way on Route 10 there, because there's only one way out of there, and they can't go through until the buses roll over to get out.
They're backed up, now, I've not seen them on Route 10.
Well, I have seen them.
But they are backed up all the way to the parking lot, I have seen that.
But my question is, and I looked at myself, it wouldn't be a whole lot of expense to build them another access to Route 10, where they can come off the parking lot and get out without waiting on the buses.
Well, I think in one of those places, they've been doing that a little bit anyway. Yeah, and, because they ran over our, the thing where the gas line was buried, they've run over the plastic that comes up from that, broken in half.
I realize you'd have to talk to the state.
State road would have to approve any other access point, and they did not approve that one that they were using there for a while. In fact, they piled up dirt so they couldn't use it. Now, whether they will consider another place there, we could, they're scheduled to come down and look at the flash, those same people that does the flashing lights would be involved in that decision, too.
Like I say, I looked, now, it's almost level, I mean, people are very low effort, but...
There's a couple of places that could be done, if they would approve it.
Well, can you check on that, please?
Yeah, we can check on when they come out on the flashing lights. It's next week sometime.
Next Tuesday, 7:00, Midway, 25th.
Okay, Dana, Carol, do you have anything to add, Mr. Smith?
No.
All right, thanks, Dana, appreciate it, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
All righty, that case, we'll go down into the administrative section. Do I have a motion, please?
I move.
Mr. Smith, please second. Officer, Mr. Curry.
Okay, I am A, according to the provisions of West Virginia Code 18-5-7, to declare the following a surplus property and sell at public auction to be held on April the 12th, 2014, at 10:00 a.m. at Lincoln County High School as part of the FFA auction. You have discs, three bottom plow, a combine. One head for a combine, a wheat head for a combine, a hay spear for a tractor, set of forks, and a Mere 5400 hay baler. Item B, an out-of-state trip for Duvall students to Williamsburg, Virginia, May the 27th through the 29th, 2014, transported by charter bus with the students and the families paying all costs, restricted after West Test. Item C, the adoption of revised job descriptions for the following service personnel job classifications, effective immediately, and abolish existing descriptions with the same title. Secretary 1, Secretary 2, Secretary 3, and executive Secretary. Item D, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones or provide transportation for students to and from athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, who have provided proof of private liability, liability insurance, and have completed the volunteer orientation. Item E, Marshall University student Tyra Atkins to perform field experience at West Hamlin Elementary the second semester. Item F, out-of-state travel for the following employees, Hannah Atkins to Atlanta, Georgia, March the 21st through the 23rd, 2014, to attend the Ron Travis Academy National Educators Conference, paid for through Title I funds. Greg Gosney to Atlanta, Georgia, April 13th through the 18th, 2014, to attend training to manage the new phone system, and that's paid for through the county funds. Any questions?
Yes, several. The auctions that they're having, are they having a silent auction with this, for other people to bring things in and sell?
That's my understanding, right.
That's my understanding. I was wondering, what's prompted the sudden selling of all these other items? Do you have any idea? And are these things that they may need in the future that we're getting rid of?
I certainly don't think that they need the combine.
No, no, I'm not questioning the combine, no, absolutely not.
I can't tell you about the others other than, these are items that were requested to be sold.
Was this by the teacher, or Miss Butler?
It was the teacher. So, I'm assuming with that, that she's not planning on any...
Do they have extras of these things, like they're selling their discs, they're selling their plow, they're selling their forks? What value would the tractors and the other equipment be if we don't have extras that we're selling all this? I'm just concerned, are we gonna come back, are we gonna come back in a year or so and say, "We need a new baler," or "We need a new set of plows"?
I can't answer that, Dana. Are those questions that you want me to make sure that they get answered?
Yeah, we check on them.
I think they've got two of the hay balers.
Two hay balers?
That's what I was told, I don't know. Do you know, Joe?
In relation to the hay balers, I'm not aware that they have two. They only have one. In regard to the forks, they have a large tractor and a small tractor, and they have two sets of forks for each tractor, so they got four sets of forks.
Well, they don't, okay, that answers that question.
And in regard to the plow, now, the disc, that's the only disc I saw, the only disc I'm aware that they have, but there are two three-bottom plows in the building over there, and I think the list I saw, they're only asking to sell one set.
I guess what I'm asking, Miss Lewis, is just maybe find out, is this something that they're not gonna need in the future, and are not gonna come back and ask the board to purchase? Because it's gonna cost many, many times more than what we get out of an auction replacement.
Right, I would think so.
And I think, I think everyone's already made this clear, there will be a reserve bidding on an item that will start at a certain point.
Yes.
And we have, do we have someone that's an expert in what these pieces of equipment are worth?
Well, that's not him.
Okay, I understand that.
Actually, Mr. McKipp and I had that conversation today, and we both decided neither one of us would be the person to say, "What is this item worth? Where should we start?" It would have to be someone that is knowledgeable.
I just don't wanna see another thing come up like somebody purchasing a combine to be used in Lincoln County. It's almost embarrassing, it is embarrassing, I think.
You never know what they're gonna take with it.
We certainly don't wanna run it in parades.
Well, I mean, I'm not talking about the school system. Carol, I heard that in the background.
I'm not a rabbi.
You can dread that away.
You'd be awful high up on the top of it.
What I'm saying, I think we need to approach this with caution, and to get the maximum for anything that's sold, and make sure that we don't need it in the future for sale.
Right.
You know, what we could do, I know, Mr. McKipp and I have had a discussion a little bit today, I think, aren't we gonna revise our notice to the newspaper?
Sorry to interrupt, Dana, since you and I spoke.
Because the advertisement came out today, but it doesn't list some of these items, so Jeff was gonna work with Dana there, and so we'd have a new ad that would show all of these items. And in the meantime, I guess, should Miss Butler, whoever decide that some of these things aren't really, and we wanna auction, bring those back before the auction, we delete those.
And was she not the one that supplied this thing, or...?
Yes, yes.
Well, we're similar to, okay, but I'm just saying, if this generates something, "Oh, yeah, you're right, we don't wanna really get rid of that," we can always come back and delete that from the list and surplus it we need to.
And as you said, we wanna make sure that we're getting top dollars, not, um, I'm from combined, that the forks that, you know, started at 50 bucks, right, that kind of stuff? Okay, gotcha.
That's it, okay. Brad, did you have a gun?
No.
I'm seeing we're gonna have to explain, tell me what we're gonna answer.
Honestly, if you recall, there was an agreement sometime ago, and during that agreement, we discovered that the language in the positions were kind of backwards. The Secretary 3 had Executive Secretary, Executive Secretary was more like a Secretary 3. So, we're correcting the definition and the terminology in regard to all of the Secretaries to make it totally in line with the code, and so there is no misunderstanding.
Now, Trish, would this affect just future vacancies in these areas? Or would you say, you know, is it an effect what those are in these classifications maybe doing now? Or is it just in the future, is people bid on these jobs?
It's gonna be in the future, yes. So, what's done right now is gonna be, can't undo that. Would've been good.
Okay, no one else has anything else, then we'll go down to the vote section for all the items A through F. Is that an all yes, babe? Okay, all yes. Go to finance, the motion, please. Say, Mr. Curry, and Mr. Brooks, and Mr. Gandy.
Item X, scheduled invoices totaling $436,124.17. Attachment is, we're listing all the taxes, and they're connected. Invoices are available for public inspection in the county office at any time.
Mr. McKipp does a good job, I tell you, nothing...
I'm letting him do it tonight, then. I thought maybe the taxes might be asked a little bit too much.
We discussed it.
The people coming back, and I'm sorry, I can't recall, maybe the program, they got snowed out, and then we were supposed to come over and...
All legal services.
Yeah.
Legal shield. It's one day this week.
We talked about it, we couldn't remember the exact date. Seems like every day they think we're coming, it snows. But now, they are scheduled to come, maybe Friday, maybe, or Thursday or Friday. I'll send an email. You need to know that, so that you, because you wanted to come, didn't you?
Yeah, I think Fred would come out, too, but yeah, we...
I may still have the email, you said, Carol. I didn't, it wasn't on my calendar.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then, on the finance section, is that an all yes, babe?
Yes.
Can we go to the personnel section? Motion, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, second, by Mr. Curry.
Okay, Section A is the employment of extracurricular personnel. Section B is resignation and or retirement, and it's noted under the effective date whether it is a resignation or retirement. And then, to abolish the service personnel position and job description for coordinator of employee benefits, effective immediately. And then, to correct the minutes of February the 28th, 2014, LCHS position for social coordinator was not abolished.
The abolishment of the service personnel job description coordinator, now, is that some, a job that's currently in existence, or that one we used to have?
It's one that, Marshall Weaver.
Oh, that one, Marshall, okay. Okay, if I have anything else? Okay, that's, if there's anything further, then, is that an all yes, babe?
Yes.
All right, that brings us down to comments and concerns. So, you have Mr. Brun here with us, is he here? Yeah, there he is.
And Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis?
With this.
A tandem with...
And I would request that we go into executive session.
Let me, if we could, could anyone share what's anything that might not be of an executive session nature, so we can do those things, that way, the press and all, if it's ready, tell them then we can do our executive session.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I would like to ask that we put in a suggestion box for in all the schools and the buildings, and let them, these employees, tell us how we might save money or help the students more. Because I've had a couple of people talk to me in the last week that had some real good ideas, I think, and it seemed like when they tell their superiors, more or less falls on deaf ears. So, I would ask it, you know, and maybe they put them in a sealed envelope, and they deliver them to us, let us open them. I mean, that might be a little...
Sounds like a good idea to me.
If this saves a lot of money, they get a cut out of them. Like a lot of everything.
You know, Doug came up with a good cost-saving idea here, and I'm sure there are plenty more out there, but I've had a couple this week, and I know one of them will save quite a bit of money, but it...
It makes sense, because they know more about what they're doing.
That's exactly right. You know, it could be a bus run, or a maintenance, or a baseball glove, there's things out there of ways we can save money. And I know Mr. Parsons is always looking for ways to save money, so...
Nine bucks.
Okay, is that all, I don't know, Fred? Larry, do you have anything?
I was gonna ask Fred, you're thinking about it at each school, each department?
Or they could email it if they... Or they could email it if they want, and it could be anonymous, or they could put their names on there, what they want. They could just turn them in to the principal, any group, just make sure that we're the ones open, is what I'm saying.
Well, that's a bit of their discretion, because like I say, our email addresses are in the directory.
They could, they could email them, of course, yes.
That'll be interesting.
That's a good idea.
Good. Okay. I don't guess we have anything, yes, we do. Everybody noticed something, Mr. Lind will talk to us before, that there's an ad in the newspaper about the Bully, the Bully team, Bully Heen policy and all that that we have going. And I think that's good. I think we're in the right direction there, and it'll give everybody the opportunity to share with us some things that, you know, parents that may be a little bit reluctant, it gives them a way of doing things. They do things anonymously, or openly, or however they want to do it, so I think that's a good thing we've got started there.
Did y'all get your cards?
Yes.
Okay, because they had made the corrections.
Oh, okay. So every student's got a card, right? Got all the info, good. All righty, if there's nothing else, then we'll go back and entertain Mrs. Lucas's vote, or request that we go into executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Is this a personnel matter?
Yes.
Okay, executive session for personnel. Got a motion?
Second.
Curry made the motion, Lucas seconded, and the board will go into executive session, 7:28.